Something like that.
It's a little shocking when you see it on the screen there.
It'll probably be the same one. We're sitting up there on the dais looking at it, so.
Well, we've been looking at it for years, but the carpet just.
Highlights.
Yes, highlights.
It just pops it out.
Yes.
Six twenty-eight. Six twenty-nine. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. Huh? Tom hasn't joined us yet. Have we heard from Nicole? Have we heard from Jake if he might join us, sir?
He did text me prior to the study meeting saying that it was not likely that he'd be able to join the regular meeting. But he was going to try and jump in if he was able, but most likely it wouldn't be at the beginning. So he's still gonna try, but most likely not going to happen.
Looks like we're just about there. And we are there. Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting, the West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum participating electronically in our meeting. Councilman Jake Fittisimano is excused. If he's able to, he will join us for some portion of the meeting, but we will proceed on without him. And we expect Councilman Hune to shortly join us as well. With that then, we will begin with the Inside the Police Department video. I think they're ready to have that, so.
Partnership. That's the relationship between the West Valley City Police Department and the residents of the city. From combating crime to helping provide oversight, the work in West Valley City is done as a team.
Police are supposed to be members of their community, and the community members are the police.
One outstanding example of this police-community partnership, the Professional Standards Review Board.
The West Valley City Police Department established what they call the Professional Standards Review Board in 1992. It is the longest-standing board of its type here in Utah.
My name is Abby Dizon-Mon. I have lived in West Valley for about thirteen years. I am an attorney in Salt Lake City, Utah.
Abby Dizon-Mon is the chair of the PSRB. She's headed up the group for six years and sat on the board for eight.
I have really enjoyed serving on the PSRB. And I believe that all of our concerns that we have voiced with the police department, that we've either taken directly to the chief or to the city manager, have been heard. We've had lengthy conversations about ways that we can change.
The PSRB provides valuable input about officers' most complex interactions.
The key here is that we bring these cases to them, and this is every instance where an officer uses force in our city. In most cases where they show force, meaning point a firearm or a taser at the direction of a person. And every case where an internal affairs case is moved forward in our process.
I think it's critically important to have civilian input into those instances so that it's not just the officers reviewing each other, not just the chief reviewing those instances, but to have citizen input.
Sometimes the members of our PSRB are sometimes harsh critics, and we ask that of them. We need that of them very much, and they certainly deliver every time, and we are deeply appreciative of their investment, their voluntary investment, massive amounts of hours in what they do.
The West Valley City Police Department is one of only two agencies in the state with a citizen review board. It's a partnership the department and the city consider essential.
This city and not only our elected officials today, but city leaders from many years past recognize that it was critical that our law enforcement activities here, our police department in this city and our community, be well-aligned, and that's part of the accountability that we have to the people in this community.
It's very valuable to us to have a citizen's input on how we do business, simply because even though we train to the best of our abilities and we perform to the best of our abilities, it doesn't always translate to a citizen's perspective. So it's very important to us to have that civilian perspective, just to make sure that we're keeping the bigger picture in mind.
Helpful and effective, the opinion of the PSRB carries weight in the department.
Given my relationship with her and the experiences that I've had with Chief Jacobs, I believe that she really takes our recommendations seriously. She's appeared at several of our meetings, at several of our closed meetings, to update us on any discipline that we've recommended to her.
Police and community, working as partners to ensure best practices now and into the future.
Our chief is really dedicated and committed to making sure that our officers are at the forefront of change, not trying to catch up whenever something hits the news, and I'm really proud of that.
Okay, thank you very much. We move on to our agenda then. We have our minutes of July seven. Motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of minutes?
Second.
Seeing or hearing no comments on the minutes, why? Then without objections, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objections, that's unanimous. Next, we go to our comment period. I believe Nicole, that we do have some for public comment, so if you'll start them off. Who's first?
We did have two people sign up. The second person does not appear that they're here. The first person is Jim Beesock. Jim, you are now unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to give a shout out to our parking compliance department. Since Jenny has taken the supervision part of it, it has come together so well. First thing they did was change it to parking compliance instead of parking ordinance enforcement. Great name change. It's not as harsh. There was, and one of the council members is familiar with this, a meth lab, a mobile meth lab in a RV going around the neighborhood. Well, it came into my neighborhood, and I regularly called Andrew, constantly went out, was ticketing and ticking, and finally Jenny came out and put an impound order on it. It hasn't been back since she did that. I want to give them a heads up. They are very efficient and working hard and could be a good, you know, department of the month choice. The chief's meeting, another great meeting. Craig Thomas did a great job on the neighborhood watch, getting the information out and about needing more. Might be a good thing to put in the water bill on the green paper sometime, but lots of good information. And then I'm glad to see that you guys will be looking at the fireworks thing. Once again, I wasn't asking for it to be, you know, omitted or anything like that, but I'd like to see some education. And when you see minor children out there lighting off aerials, holding them in their hand, putting smoke bombs down their fringe shirts, putting fireworks in mailboxes, those are all dangerous, and the police department does not have anything specific to enforce in those cases. That's all I have. Hopefully you guys are staying safe. Have a good evening.
Thank you. So that's all, Nicole?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any comments from our acting city manager, our assistant city manager, Paul Isaac?
Thank you, sir. No, not tonight.
Council members, any comments? Hearing none, then I will go to the next item on our agenda. This is a public hearing. This is on application GPZ five twenty-twenty filed by James Graham. And this is a general plan change, a zoning change, and a development agreement. This is on property. Oops. At fifteen eighty West Whitlock Avenue, three acres. It's a proposal to make this, change it from rural residential to low-density residential. And a zone change from agricultural to residential sustainability. One of the new categories recently that we adopted. They're proposing it be subdivided into eleven lots, averaging just under nine thousand four hundred square feet. And I think those are the pertinent items. This is a project that has had multiple requests for changing it. So that is the issue then before us. And with that, what I will do is open. Oh, excuse me. Does the council have anything else they want to mention on the introduction? Hearing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone who's just, who wants to speak to this, Nicole?
Mayor, we did have someone that wanted to speak, but she was unsure if she would be able to attend. So she did submit a comment and asked that it be read on the public record. If you're okay, I can go ahead and do that.
All right. Oh, excuse me. How long is it?
It's really short. It's just a quick paragraph.
It wouldn't exceed the five minutes?
No, sir. This is from Monica Dixon. And this is her comment. It says, "As the spokesperson for the Chesterfield neighborhood, I want to represent all the people who are not informed about this meeting, cannot attend this meeting, or are limited by the online forum. Our collective statement is that we do not want the zoning to change at fifteen eighty West Whitlock Avenue. We want the area to remain agriculture. We are concerned about a different demographic of neighbors moving in and complaining about the roosters, the flies, the smell, the late-night mariachi bands, and the horseback riders. We also object to having more traffic here. There are four churches in our neighborhood already, and they bring heavy traffic. Thank you for your consideration of this matter."
Well, thank you. And no one's gone online yet.
No, sir. We do have the gentleman that wanted to speak during the general public comment. It looks like he is now online, but it's not related to this application, but I just wanted to let you know.
If he will stay on the line, I believe we'll get to him in just a moment. But since I opened the public comment portion, we'll need to close that now and bring it back to the council. Council, are you okay if we interrupt at this point to hear the public comment? Or do you want to continue with this item?
Mayor, I think it might be cleaner for purposes of our record if we just took the comment at the end of our agenda.
Okay. Okay. I'm fine with that. If no one objects, why? That's what we will do. So we will now consider ordinance twenty-two-seven, ordinance twenty-two-eight, and resolution twenty-one-oh-nine in conjunction with this to the council for any comments, discussion, motions, whatever is the council's pleasure.
I want to reject the ordinance twenty-eight twenty-seven and twenty-eight twenty-eight and resolution twenty-one-oh-nine. Is that all together? Do I have to go separate? Like, because?
Well, because we need to do a roll call vote, we will take them individually.
All right, and I go with ordinance twenty-eight twenty-seven.
And so your motion is to what?
Reject it.
Deny it.
Deny it.
Deny. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is properly before us to deny this request, ordinance twenty-two-seven. Any discussion? Hearing none. Then we will go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Unmute and yes.
Councilman Northfelt?
No.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
So ordinance twenty-two-seven is denied.
I would move for denial of ordinance twenty-two-eight.
Second.
Any discussion to the motion or the issue? Hearing none, we'll go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
And next we have resolution twenty-one-oh-nine.
I would move for denial of resolution twenty-one-zero-nine.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have our resolutions. We will begin with resolution twenty-one-hundred. This will encourage our get it up here before me. This is a resolution regarding from the council to our residents of West Valley City to encourage them to follow appropriate health guidelines. This specifically is related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And it encourages the wearing of masks in public places to follow state and local orders and recommendations to slow the spread of the disease. And that's not exactly how it's stated in the resolution, but I think that we wanted to review that, set forth some issues, reasons why. On, we are concerned for the health of our citizens. We are concerned that they are able to get back to work, that businesses as well are encouraged to practice safe guidelines for their employees and their clients. And so we are proposing this resolution to notify the city of that encouragement that we are planning on. So that's my introduction. Council members want to add anything more to that?
I want to have my take on this one. So I would love to have a stronger word and a bigger vocabulary for this resolution, but that's the way we are right now. And I just wanted to know, a lot of people out there, they are struggling, and they have been in their home for three, four months, and they cannot do anything, and they, they really really sad, to be honest with you. A lot of people, hey, family members are around them, and they, they struggling. And some they do have, and they were concerned about, they don't want their kids or their grandchildren to come to visit them. That we're sad to both ways, you know. And they, sometimes they told me about, you know, Tom, I'm a really dependent person, but now I have to very much depend on the people, people, you guys have to carry food to our door, and we have a special hour, have to go shopping, and I I feel bad about that. And also I look and see the county we have right here as a solid county. We have right here in Summit County, we have a solid city, and also West Valley City, they have a big, probably the biggest numbers we have here in the county to have people COVID-nineteen or people, the number of people that die because of COVID-nineteen too. District one is, you can see that District one is a four-hundred, and now it's a five-hundred something. And that's, that's bad. The city, city budgets, cities basically tax, sale tax revenue is plummeting, is coming down badly, and that's really, really not good for our city. But, but I'm a reasonable guy, just like you, and I can, I worked in that with you guys, and but I wish that we could have a bigger vocabulary for this resolution, and so can, we don't want to see that so many people out there struggling and cannot do much with the COVID-nineteen, and cities in big trouble with the sale tax and other things. That's my, my concern, my expression, and I want to share it with you. But the same thing I said, I am a reasonable guy, and I can work with you guys and try to work through with this. But I think it's it's tough.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will say that the more I study the issue, the more I move towards not just encouraging, but even as far as maybe requiring and supporting the requirement of wearing masks indoors and all locations. However, I believe that the resolution represents the majority of the council, and I will vote in favor of it. But I do know that the issue of wearing face coverings, social distancing, and thoroughly and frequently washing hands, especially in the business environment or public environment, will do more to curtail COVID-nineteen than most anything else that we could do. And so to some degree, it's just up to the residents of our city. I know at times that's very difficult to do, especially if you have a large family in a small home, or maybe a couple of families in a home, but it's very critical that if we want to slow the spread of this disease and promote businesses being open and of people getting back to work, those three items are perhaps some of the most critical in order for us to accomplish that. So we'll continue our efforts to promote that from a city standpoint. With that then?
Mayor, may I say something? Recently, yesterday or two days ago, the store and cable news network, in the lady in Maryland, I believe, the Baltimore woman, and she she couldn't see her mother for four months, only through Zoom, and she didn't want to do that anymore. She still, she went to fire department and asked for the fire department, and they carried her on the bucket, you know, the fire truck, the bucket, so they, they used that bucket to carry her up to the store. And so she can say, she can see her mother face-to-face through the window, and that is really to make you cry when you see something like that. It is incredible. I think it's a beautiful picture right there. Yeah, a lot stores right now, you can see that they put aside face mask recording, or, you know, and somebody asks, well, sure, you're gonna wear your face mask inside the store. But I said, and I, you know, I, I'm willing to work with you guys, but I think we need to have a, maybe in the future, we can have a bigger vocabulary, bigger word to support our county, support our city, and I want to increase property tax for, because we have a problem with sale tax right now. It's very much the plummeting in our city. But again, support you guys.
Move to approve resolution twenty-one-hundred. Second.
Motion is properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next we go to resolution twenty-one-oh-one to authorize the purchase of a I call it Timco, but is it Timco? Six hundred street sweeper from Inner Mountain Sweeper. And it's for a hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Will come from our Stormwater Utility Fund, not from our general fund. We replace these regularly when the maintenance starts to get high and when there's still some trade-in value from the old sweeper. The old sweeper is being traded in at a hundred and five thousand. That's why the cost is only a hundred and eighty-four thousand. With that introduction then to the council.
I would move for approval of resolution twenty-one-zero-one.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next is resolution twenty-one-oh-two. This will do an amendment to our interlocal cooperative agreement between our city and Salt Lake County for the construction of twenty-five fifty South. This project, these are funds that we will receive, and this agreement has to be in place for us to receive those funds, five hundred thousand dollars from the county. And this is the vehicle that we use for that. And so that will get this project to where it can be completed, tidied up, finalized. Great things that we're doing over there in that area, the section of the city where we're growing in that industrial and commercial area, so that is the issue before us to the council.
Move for approval of resolution twenty-one-zero-two.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing none to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On our consent agenda, we have resolution twenty-one-three and resolution twenty-one-four. These are the routine items we constantly do where we enter into an easement purchase agreement, temporary construction, easement, warranty deed, et cetera. This, the first one is at thirty-seven eighty-nine South Constitutional, Constitution Boulevard as a part of that project, one more of the many that we've done like this. The twenty-one-four is for thirty-eight thirty- The 20-104 is for 3830 South Market Street. And that is for a, the asphalt overlay project that we're doing, where they require that some of the curb and gutter be changed. State requires that and federal government for ADA compliance. So while we're doing the asphalt overlay, we also take care of these items. And in conjunction to that, we need to work with the property owners to be able to get that done. That is the issue before us for these two consent agenda items.
Move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our agenda for this evening. We appreciate your joining us electronically. We'll
The gentleman.
Oh, you have a comment?
Well, yes, the gentleman that was waiting to give his comment from the beginning.
Thank you. My short-term memory isn't bad. I just don't have one. With that then to Nicole, bring on this individual.
We have Mike Markham.
Oh, okay.
Mike, you are unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me? Is it working? Okay. I, I hope everybody's emails are down. I sent everybody an email. Some people probably got it twice with the exception of Mayor Bigelow. His is the only one that came back to me and that's just because of a misspelling. But I'm kind of concerned with the 2700 West Reconstruction Project. They came back to us five times for more money. I know one of them was at the Choice of Public Works to add some fiber to the, to the asphalt. But the last two, four and five for the storm drain repair and for the crown in the road. The crown was excessive. I, I would have thought all of that should have been known of prior to getting into this because the crown was there all along. The storm drains probably been there for a long time. You know, that's a $200,000 expenditure out of Public Works. When I'm not quite sure, the sales tax being in the gutter, that somebody's not being fair or somebody didn't do their due diligence on that, rather at the city or I think it's Acme Construction that's doing that. I'm not sure. I can't remember their name. But how many times can these people come back to us? Can they give us the low ball expected bid and then keep coming back to us for more and more money? Especially when those last two should have been figured in. Storm drains just don't show up and the crown's been there all along. So, you know, I would think we need to kind of look at stuff like that. So that's my comment.
Thank you. And because, and I do need to add a comment to that, but we'll ask if Mr. Isaac has any comments as we typically do.
No, sir, but I sure love what's happening on 2700.
The comment I would make in, on those items is that a project is put out to bid and is defined. Whether, because these were not included in the bid, the first one, the storm drain, it was discovered that there were some damage to the storm drains, which was unknown. And it was decided by the city that we would change and include that in the project while it was dug up so that it would not be, they would not have to dig up the recently repaved and fixed road. There was a lot of debate about, I know on the crown, they were aware of it. They were not going to change that, but decided that in the interest of long term, this decision was made after the bids were let and accepted. So had those been included in the original bid request, the cost would have been, you know, higher. It's just one of those things that, it's not that they didn't do due diligence. The decision was made later to add these to the project. We've done the same thing with some items on UDOT where we've added things because when we got into it, we realized that it would be cheaper to do it that way. We usually get most of those, but sometimes additional information changes that. These were, although they were changes, were not significantly out of line. That's just my comment. Council members, anything? I think I got that right, didn't I, Paul?
Yes, sir. Very good.
Well, we've had quite a bit of discussion on them, so. Hearing no further comments. We will stand adjourned.
Most adjourned.
With hearing no opposition, then the vote is unanimous. We are adjourned.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, be safe, everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.